I'd like to call this meeting in order. This is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. It's Tuesday, June 12th, 2018. And Mayor Protim, do you have introductions, announcements?
Actually, I would just like to say happy birthday to the Charlotte Hall Museum. Ninety years old yesterday. And it's a treasure for Prescott. Thank you.
Very good. We have an invocation by Senior Pastor Dan Hurlbert with the Prescott United Methodist Church, excuse me, and then the pledge by Councilman Lamerson.
Let us pray. Oh God, we give you thanks for this beautiful day and this beautiful place in which we live. We thank you for these public servants, and we ask that you would keep us all mindful that we are here to serve the whole community, not just those with whom we agree, but each person that you have placed in our care. We pray for your will to be done throughout this meeting, and we pray for rain in our dry part of this world. We give you thanks for the abundance that you have given us. Help us to share faithfully with others. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Let's call roll, please.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Here.
Mayor Protim Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilwoman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Do we have anything that we'd like to poll from the consent agenda? Any council members?
Mayor, item 6A would like to be polled.
Entertain a motion on the consent.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 6B through 6G.
Second. We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Thank you. Item 6A.
If we could get a toggle switch or something that actually worked.
Do we have a staff member and...
Good afternoon, council. Yeah. Item 6A is in the approval of an amendment for a solid waste hauling contract, an existing contract we have with Fan Contracting. It's for an increase of the annual amount from $735,000 to $835,000. The city uses contract hauling to transport waste and recyclables from the transfer station to both the Gray Wolf landfill in Dewey and recycling facilities in Phoenix because of increased tonnage coming through the transfer station and anticipation of some CPI and surcharge on the fuel that's built into the contract. Staff is requesting that the annual contract amount be adjusted by $100,000 in this current fiscal year and then be set at $835,000 each successive year of the contract. The contract is for five years. We're in the second year here in fiscal year 18, and then it has initial five-year period and then five-year, five-one-year extensions. So it's a total of a 10-year contract.
Okay. Thank you, Ian. Councilman Good?
Yeah, I had some questions. I decided to pull a copy of the contract, the amendments, and the exhibits on this. And my concern was, here we are, just finishing the first year of a five-year agreement, and our expected payments are 11% higher than originally anticipated, and then a request that we even go higher over the course of the remaining period of the contract to increase the anticipated maximum level by 13.5%. So I felt that either we did a pretty poor job of anticipating our costs at the beginning of the contract, or there's some significant unanticipated expenses that have been generated since the contract was enacted. I also pulled the CPI because the example calculations in the amendment, I thought, were taking a worst-case scenario and then using those to justify a higher reimbursement for diesel fuel by using CPI less energy rather than the actual petroleum CPI, which has been running pretty consistently right around 3%, which would indicate that we may be paying too much for reimbursement on fuel costs for distance hauling rather than using a pretty reliable government-generated CPI index. So those were my concerns. Comment?
Yeah. So, good comments. So the first one is that this contract was based on an anticipation of about 45,000 tons of hauling per year. So we are experiencing more than that. The thing about the contract is that this increase is budget-neutral, effectively. It's budget-neutral in that we take in money at the transfer station when people dump, and we're also collecting fees for our trash as we collect it, residential and commercial. So while the amount is increasing, it's more just an adjustment of the tonnage that we're seeing. And so we are, you know, the revenue's coming in, and then we're going to pay more in hauling. We're going to pay more in tonnage removal at the landfill.
So if I understand that, you're saying that you're getting additional revenue from people that are bringing in debris, dumping it, and paying for it, which is a separate revenue stream versus the additional expenses you're paying on this contract. So in essence, you'll have revenue to pay for the additional contract costs.
Yes, because, yeah, because the two costs that we incur are obviously the hauling cost to get rid of what we bring in, and then the fees at the actual landfill. So both of those are going up. In this contract, we just didn't anticipate as much either growth or increased use of the transfer station by commercial and/or residents who are using our facility. So we're just basically experiencing growth beyond what we kind of anticipated. It would make sense that we would have been back during the period, you know, regardless of whether we had this growth right now, because 10 years is such a long period, we probably couldn't have stuck with 45,000 tons a year, every year, regardless. So yes, it's revenue-neutral in that sense. We're taking more money in, and we're paying more to move it out, but we're not losing on that. That's apart from some of the CPI stuff you talked about.
Yeah. Well, can you comment on the CPI stuff? Because I know in the amendment, it talks about CPI less energy. But energy includes gasoline, natural gas, a lot of other energy sources, and we're really talking about diesel fuel costs for these vehicles, trucks.
Correct. And we've got Mike Carr with us as well from Fleet Services. Fleet Services manages the fuel contract for the entire city and is first in that.
That's true. But separate from that, this contract doesn't utilize the same pricing index we do for our fuel contract citywide. It's their, the cost that they're paying at the pump. So Fan's the contractor. They're paying the price at the pump. Stipulated in the contract, and you saw the amendments, if it goes above $3.45 per gallon, we get a surcharge from them. If it goes below $1.65 a gallon, they give us a credit. So that was language, because I was in solid waste before, that was put into that contract, I'd say, 10 to 15 years ago. That seemed to work in our favor at the time. There was a time when we had the fuel prices were above $4 a gallon, where we were paying them at the end of the month for the additional costs. And what it is, it's to try to make the contract better for both parties. So we're asking them to give us a price per ton for 10 years, a period of 10 years. So during that time, fluctuations in pricing, they would have to have a magic ball to say, "Well, we can make a profit doing this if the fuel prices stay within this range." So we're giving them an option to still make it equitable for both parties, to say, "If the price goes above this range, you're due additional monies from the city based on making this equitable for both parties." So that was, that language that was in there was built on that, and it's actually something that we adopted from the city of Phoenix, I believe, in their hauling contract when they put this service out to bid.
Wouldn't you agree that it would be more appropriate to actually tie CPI to petroleum costs rather than energy in general?
I don't know if that's something we can go back and change at this point with the contract being in place. I don't know why the index was used in that manner instead of the petroleum that was used for the less energy, but I have not, unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you on what the price difference is.
Can you tell me what percentage of our payments are a function of the fuel CPI adjustment?
So currently, I don't think we've had any payments towards that, because it's only one that reaches that threshold of $3.65 a gallon and above, and that's what their cost is. So in the near future, could it get there? We're at, I believe, 309 a gallon right now is what we're looking at during this period. It fluctuates up and down, but we're seeing a steady increase, and there's been a projection for an increase for the year. But as far as 365, there's no projection showing that we're going to get to that amount this year. I think what the bigger part of this, and I don't want to speak out of turn, is that the increased volume has cost more money on the contract than what was anticipated. The CPI increase and the fuel increase, those were just amendments and sections of the contract that were already existing. I'm not sure that that was part of what the actual...
Well, it just seems that it's, it makes much more sense to tie it actually to their, to a CPI that's directly related to their real costs.
And I believe...
They don't have any concern about costs of natural gas.
Right. I honestly, I'm sorry, unfortunately, Councilman Good, I could not answer why that was the language that's put in there, to reflect CPI less energy. But if it's something that could be amended in the future...
Well, it doesn't look like it's going to have a significant impact on our costs, at least in this fiscal year.
Right.
But, you know, we're looking at four more years in this contract, plus five one-year options. It certainly might be.
I agree.
Yeah, I concur. I can't really add too much on why that exact CPI index that was written that way. I think it was, you know, like I said, taken from Phoenix at the time, and we haven't been hurt by it to this point. There is language in the contract that allows for us to make amendments. We've done, you know, this is the fourth one. So certainly, I think if it became an issue for us, we could come back and look at that. We are tracking the fact that we do have, you know, tonnage increases at the landfill. If this became an issue, we could certainly come back. But we weren't, this amendment specifically doesn't talk about, you know, anything regarding adjusting the CPI at this point. It was just an increase to get us through the increased business that we're experiencing, but...
Right. So we're being asked to increase the maximum allowable payment during the course of the contract up to $850,000 a year.
That's correct, yes. We have a projection this year that we'll spend about $809,000 this year. So we felt like we should go to 835, and then that is a maximum. If business drops, it doesn't mean we spend it.
All right. Well, my concerns, I think, are addressed, and if it turns out that we have a diesel spike, I guess we can deal with it further on down the road.
Okay. Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if I'm similar to Councilman Good here. I find it difficult that, with the volatility of fuels, et cetera, that we would wrap things up for a 10-year deal. I would think that we would want to look at things on an annual basis rather than reject out a 10-year deal. I mean, I just, I can't visualize the advantage to the city to work at, I can see why a private contractor would, but on, from my perspective, you know, I wasn't elected per se for the one private contractor, but I am elected for the rest of the citizens of Prescott to look at stuff, and I would think it would behoove us to look on an annual basis unless you were saying that's where the option comes in. We have that ability on an annual basis with an option every year to take a look at what's going on.
Thank you, Councilman. You know, it's a good point, but we need to keep in mind this contract involves a big capital investment by the contractor. By doing the 10-year contract, when we did the 10-year contract, it actually lowered the cost to the city because we weren't able to get other people to bid it, because they got to buy trash semi-haulers, they got to buy tractor-trailers and that type of stuff. And if you're doing it a year at a time, you can't find local companies willing to invest that kind of money. So by doing the 10-year time, we're able to get the cost down, and that is also why we have that price factor, and they're related to the price of diesel. If you expect a contractor, anybody, to hold a price for a year with no correlation to the diesel market, they're going to just have to add that into the lump sum cost or the per-tonnage cost. So by having that adjustment, if gas prices go up, it keeps our per-ton costs lower. So the reason we did do the longer contract is to keep the costs lower. If you tried to do it each year, your costs would be higher.
Okay. While I can relate to what you're saying, I also think about, you know, we're getting closer to the 365 or whatever we were talking about. When's the last time we saw the 265 or 235? You know, at what level do we talk about what's really in the best interest of the people that we were elected to serve? And I understand what you're talking about, and maybe that's what's built in on the opportunity to look at the options on a regular basis. So I understand what you're saying. I don't like it, but I mean, I understand why they would want some sort of commitment for the investment they have to outlay. So, thanks.
Mayor Protim?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So Ian, the tonnage in the contract originally was based on 45,000 and then 4,500 on recycle. What is that up to? Do we know?
I don't have that figure right here, but I know we're over, in the 50,000 range. We're above 50,000 on the tonnage of that. I don't think recycle has gone up quite as much, you know, percentage-wise, but that's where we are. We're, you know, we're coming in at approximately, or 85,000 over a contract that's 735. So that sounds like it's about 12% over, somewhere in that range. It's just increased use. If you've gone out to the transfer station lately and you waited in line, you'll know that it's pretty busy out there.
And that gets hauled to the landfill, and recycle goes down to Phoenix. So it's quite a trip for...
Yeah. One goes to the Dewey, the Gray Wolf in Dewey, and the other goes to the Phoenix Murph.
Thank you.
Councilman Sishka?
Yeah, I just have one question. How long is our contract with Gray Wolf? Or how long does it extend?
Yeah. That contract is, I'm not going to be exact, but it's like a 20-year, it was like a 30-year when it came out, and it's been a number of years. So it's still out there, about 20 years or so.
Okay. Thank you. We have annual increases on that as well. We had, you know...
Other questions, comments from the council? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda item A.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Okay. Let's move on to item 7, ordinances.
Item 7A, adopt ordinance number 2018-1619, authorizing the granting of a right-of-way easement to Arizona Public Service Company and Arizona Corporation, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said easement.
Do I hear a motion on this?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2018-1619.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Mayor Protim, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I would like to comment because Darla is in the audience. Darla DeVale and Sean from Phoenix, they have done an amazing job in talking to the community about what's going to happen with all those poles, taking them out of the neighborhood, placing them across from Willow Lake, and now they're extending them. I just want to congratulate you on that, because otherwise, our room would be filled with people. So thank you for that very much. Good job.
Good comment. We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thanks again for being here. Appreciate your help and your partnership. All right, let's move on to item 8, liquor license.
Mayor and council, the item before you is a public hearing in consideration for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Barbudos Grill and Cantina located at 1042 Willow Creek Road, Suite 107. The application has been determined to be in compliance with the city requirements and being recommended for approval. The application fee has been paid, and it's been posted at the location for the required 20 days. No public comments have been received, and the applicant is in the audience if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Anyone? It's very good Mexican food, by the way. We appreciate that. It's a good service to our community. Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you.
May I move to approve for liquor license application number 19335 for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Barbudos Grill and Cantina at 1042 Willow Creek Road, number 107.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for being here today. All right, let's move on to item 8B.
Item 8B is a permanent extension of premises. It's approval for a permanent change for area of service on an extension of premises patio for Bucky O'Neil VFW Post 541. Location is 202 North Arizona Avenue.
Questions, comments from the council? Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for a permanent change of area of service on an extension of premises patio license number 1413009 for a Series 14 private club liquor license for Bucky O'Neil VFW Post 541, location 202 North Arizona Avenue.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Item 8C, looks like we have some special events.
Mayor and council, we have four special events on the agenda today. The first one is for approval of a Series 15 special event liquor license for the Launchpad Teen Center for the Prescott High School 30-year reunion. It will take place at the Holiday Courtyard on Saturday, July 28th. The second one is for the Boys and Girls Club of Central Arizona. The event is called the Mile High Brew Fest at the Mile High Middle School on Saturday, August 11th. The third one is for the Northern Arizona Blues Alliance, the Master of the Blues Harp Concert Event, and it will be at 2875 South Goldwater Lake Road on September 1st. And the last one is the Prescott Frontier Rodeo Foundation will be having an event called the Grapes for Grades fundraiser at Walters Garden Center on June 24th, 2018.
All right. Entertain a motion on those?
Mayor, I move to forward special event liquor license applications 8C1 through 8C4 to the Arizona State Liquor Board with recommendation of approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, moving on to item 9, regular agenda, 9A.
Item A, award of city contract to Fan Environmental LLC for drilling, testing, and preliminary design services for the airport production well number five design-build project.
Eric?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Eric Bay, Public Works. This next item is the first phase in a two-phase design-build project for the installation of a new production well out in our airport zone, and this would be the airport well number five. Phase number one is going to be siding the well, drilling the hole, testing the metrics of the well, and then developing like a 15% schematic and a GMP, depending on what we find down in the hole, how much flow it's producing, what the water quality is, et cetera. Phase two, which we'll be coming back to, will be after we have all these metrics, we're going to design the site, the building, equip the well, and then phase two will also pay for construction of this well. So we, let's see, this will be the third production well in the airport zone. We're very excited about this well because we just completed the Zone 12 interconnect booster pump station, and this booster pump station takes domestic water out of our Zone 12 and puts it into the city zones to supplement the flows coming out of Chino. We had a competitive qualification submittal. Multiple contractors submitted. This contractor we negotiated with, and we're comfortable with this contract, and we're recommending award at this time. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have about this project.
Thank you, Eric. Councilman Blair?
Eric, can you explain to me, we have a treatment plant in Chino Valley that treats water for all the different legal things that we have to treat it for. How do we treat the product out at the airport? Do we...
So the treatment in the Chino area is very simple. It's basically a blending plan. And a lot of people, you know, would say, "Hey, that's not really any active treatment," but it is recognized by ADQ as a treatment process. So all water that we have coming out of our wells in the Chino field, they get blended together, and then they go through a point which is called the entrance point to our distribution system, the EPDS, and that's where we sample, make sure that our water is safe for everybody. We do this because some of the wells in Chino have a trace amount of arsenic in it. The wells in the airport zone are no different. Airport well number two does not have arsenic within the well, but airport well number three does. So at airport well number three, we don't have the ability to blend that water, so onsite, we have adsorptive media arsenic treatment. So that's what we're doing. Once we test the well for airport well number five, we have various different options. If there's no arsenic in that, we're good. We can connect that right into our distribution system. If there is arsenic, you know, we will discuss during the 15% schematic design, you know, how we're going to handle that.
Do we put fluoride in our water? Do you know?
No, we don't. No, we do not.
Okay. That's all I want to know. I just thought the process is interesting and how they get it done.
Other questions or comments from the council? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve contract number 2018-201.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, Eric. Let's move on to item 9B, please.
Number one, approve acceptance of Federal Aviation Administration grant for the runway rehabilitation of runway 3R/21L and mitigation of hotspot number two at Prescott Municipal Airport. Number two, approval of authorization of service number 15 to Dibble Engineering for construction administration services for the runway rehab and mitigation of hotspot number two. Number three is award of a city contract to Fan Contracting Incorporated for the construction services of the runway rehab project at PRC. Number four, authorize the expenditure of the local grant match in the amount not to exceed $152,500. Number five is authorization for night work to be performed at Prescott Municipal Airport.
Dr. Sabat, it's always good to get money from the federal government. Way to go.
That's very true.
Especially 95%.
That's great. And then the other 2.5% from the state also is very helpful. So thank you. So Mayor and council, what we have in front of us is a five-part proposal relating to the reconstruction of a runway and also to mitigate what we call a hotspot. A hotspot is an incursion area where it's already been identified by the FAA as an area of safety concern, where there's a possibility of aircraft intersecting with another aircraft. So we want to mitigate that safety issue. So what we have are five items here that are in front of you. The first one, obviously, is the grant to be received from the FAA. This is roughly $5.8 million, a pretty sizable amount. This shows their interest in the airport and in the community, and I think that really is a testament to their support of what we've experienced with the FAA so far. The second one is $473,000 for construction administration services from Dibble. They've been fabulous, and we really appreciate working with them, and they'll do a great job keeping it on track so that we can make it in time for the opening of the runway in late August and the possibility of having air service start at the end of August. The third item is an award to Fan Contracting for the actual job, the construction work. I'm very pleased to hear that they may be having a batch plan either on or near the site, which would limit the amount of transit in the community, which is good, particularly in light of item number five, which is night work, which is being addressed. And then the fourth item is to authorize the local share or the match for roughly $152,500. The neat part is that the city's reimbursable amount in this grant is actually up to $257,000 of staff coverage, since we're not hiring any new workers for this project. In essence, we are recovering our match through staff reimbursement. So I think it's a really good deal.
That's great. Thank you so much. Councilman Blair?
That's a smoking deal. I like that. Question, when you start doing the runway improvement, how do you manage to get along with the airport, the folks in the sorcery bombers, and the regular traffic? Where do you put that traffic if you're going to have the runway torn apart? Where do you put that traffic if you're going to have the runway torn apart?
Well, that's a great question. I actually spoke with Cindy with the Forest Service today, but way before this project was launched and decided and designed, we brought them into the fold and discussed that with them. Right now, their season ends officially on July 30th. If they have needs beyond that, they will, they have two other locations where they will have standby assistance to come in and serve. We also offered them the other runway, the parallel runway, which is shorter, that they could use on an emergency basis if they needed to, but generally, they do prefer the longer runway. So the end of their season is July 30th. The notice to proceed on this project is July 30th.
Sounds like you got it figured out.
You bet. We've had a lot of communication with stakeholders. They're very important to us.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments from the council?
Well, I just wanted to say I'm excited about a major reconstruction project of this scope getting started. As you know, I'm a big supporter of the airport and bringing that up to standard so that we can really have substantial service here from regional jets, and this is a big step in the right direction. So thank you very much for your leadership here.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Well, Robin, on behalf of the council, we really appreciate your efforts. It's tremendous. Mr. Barry Arons was here earlier and commented positively about all the work that you're doing. He appreciated working with you and spoke about how highly qualified you are to do this job, and we already knew that, but it was good to hear it again. So thank you for your efforts. We'll entertain a motion.
May I move to approve, one, acceptance of the Federal Aviation Administration grant City contract number 2018-239. I can do it all at once, right? Okay. And number two, approve the city contract number 2014-029A15. Three, award of city contract number 2018-242. Four, authorize the expenditure of the local grant match, airport fund, in the amount not to exceed $152,500. And finally, approve night work.
That's correct.
Night work, Steve. Approve night work.
Yes, you're reading the book over there.
To be performed at the Prescott Municipal Airport.
Second.
That was a long one, Mayor Pro Tem.
Third.
Good job. We have a motion, and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, Dr. Sabat. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Item 9C, please.
Award of city contract to ALC Underground LLC for the Mingus and Douglas Lift Stations abandonment project for a new sewer main.
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Council, Eric Bay, Public Works. This next item is for the installation of some gravity sewer main that will allow wastewater collections to eliminate two of the lift stations that we have in our system. These two specific lift stations, Mingus and Douglas, were constructed circa 1950s. They're aged, they're due for replacement. Instead of investing the money in the replacement cost of these lift stations, something that we'd have to continually operate and maintain into the future, wastewater collection staff has identified a concept that allowed us to eliminate these and flow the wastewater over to a different portion of our collection system. This is our second lift station abandonment project that we've undertaken. We're hoping that this one is going to be as wildly successful as the first one that we did. We have a good contractor onboard. We've reviewed his qualifications, and we're excited to get this one rolling. With that, I'll take any questions that you may have on this project.
Questions or comments from the council? Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to award city contract number 2018-233.
Second.
We have a motion, and second, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item 9D.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Craig Dotseth, Public Works.
Craig, Mr. Dotseth, I still need to read the ordinance. Item D, adopt ordinance number 2018-1617 authorizing the purchase of real property from Stephen William Mertz and easements from Gregory Thino and Sarah Van Burgendeen, the Edwin and Mae Smith Survivors Trust, and Martin F. Lenahan for the Zone 24-27 Water Main Project, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said purchases.
Now you can go, Craig.
And one more time. Thank you, Mayor. Craig Dotseth, Public Works. So this item is for the purchase of real property as well as easements associated with our Zone 24 and 27 water improvement projects in the Thumbute area of the city. As we began the initial design of this project, it was identified to follow existing streets through the neighborhoods and such. It was going to be extremely troublesome to the neighborhoods, to the traveling public, as well as very expensive to construct everything through that area. There was another route identified via the use of these easement and this real property that not only reduces the impact to the neighborhood, reduces the cost of the project, it also will create a redundant loop in the water system in that area so that when there's a problem on the single water line that's there today, we don't affect the entire area. So it will improve the ultimate efficiency and use of the system as well. The easements are simple easement purchases. The real property, we're actually buying an entire lot because where the planned alignment is, it goes right through the middle of about the only building pad site that there was associated with the property. So we've been in negotiations with this property owner for about a year and a half or so, and finally came to terms on that and are able to bring it forward for approval. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions as you have.
Questions, comments from the council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2018-1617.
Second.
Motion, second, please vote. All right, let's move on to item 9E, please.
Award of city contract to Kimley Horn for design and other engineering services for the Carlton Street and South Cortez Street reconstruction project.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is Steve Oros of Public Works, and the item before you today is a professional services design contract with Kimley Horn to do the reconstruction plans for the Carlton-Cortez project, which is basically outside the front door here, up to Carlton, or down to Carlton, depending on your point of view, and over to the Mile High Middle School. The roadway will be placed in its entirety. There'll be some modest drainage improvements, water improvements in both streets, sewer on Carlton, and there'll be some minor landscaping. This project will start with the right sizing concept in mind first versus having something designed and having to back it off. One of the major issues is that Carlton is a detour route for a lot of activities during the summer, so we're trying to get this project designed and ready to go out to bid around the first of the year to have the project completed before next season's detour, or next detour season. Let's see, what else? Oh, Kimley Horn. We chose them from our on-call list and direct selected them for this project based on their experience and performance in other projects for the city. They're ready to begin immediately and finish the design this year. If there's any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
It's good to have this in the queue, Steve. I've figured out how to navigate that street and miss most of the gappages or potholes, if you will. I've actually had someone, when I pulled far right, pull up next to me as if I was turning right. I'm like, no, 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 I'm actually, I just know how to do this.
It's part of our traffic calming policy.
And, yeah, so it's, anyway, it's good to have it in the queue. Mayor Pro Tem.
Just, so Steve, when you say replace, will you be taking all the concrete up or the pavement up like you did on roster?
Yes. This project is more like a roster project where the, some of the concrete curbs, gutters, sidewalk will get replaced that are cracked and really broken up. The asphalt will be taken out, the base material will be reprocessed, and we'll start with a very good street that's going to last a long time.
Nice. Good. Thank you.
Let's see. Councilman Good.
Well, Steve, I just want to thank you for getting this thing going. It's been long overdue. It's a high priority. It's a high visibility project, and I'm just really pleased to see that we're finally moving on it, so thank you.
Councilman Siski.
Thank you, Mayor. So Steve, I'm assuming that you're going to keep Carlton wide so that the parades can navigate?
That'll be part of the design process to evaluate how much width there is, how much we need for the parade. Is there any opportunity to increase parking? That's all part of the design process.
Okay.
So yes, we will take that into account for the parade activities and the detour at the same time.
Excellent. Thank you.
We're going to be looking at that as well.
Other questions, comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to award city contract number 2018-230.
Second.
We have a motion, and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Moving on to item 9F, please.
Award of city contract to Earth Resources LLC for the Drainage Improvements Project.
Great. This is the first of three projects that we have queued up for drainage improvements. We did gather up a number of complaints and drainage issues, smaller drainage issues throughout the city, identified similarities in the projects and tried to package them to fit a certain contractor size or level of effort. This bid package one is identifying three improvements, the Alarkin Alley, Goldenrod Way Spillway, and Divinity Drive cul-de-sac. For a variety of reasons, these drainage areas have become problematic, some from environment, some from construction methods years ago, and the plans were prepared, publicly bid. We did receive two bids, and our engineers estimate missed one of the bids by $500, which we thought was pretty darn good. We have reviewed ERC's, Earth Resource Corporation's quality of work on other projects and found them to be satisfactory for this project, and the low bid is being recommended for your consideration today. They have 90 calendar days to finish this before the end of the summer, and the funding is coming from a combination of both the flood control money that we get and then the remainder is from the Streets Fund. If there's any questions, we're glad to answer them.
Thanks, Steve. Questions or comments from the council? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor.
Please go ahead, Jim.
Okay, Mayor, I move to award city contract number 2018-234.
Second.
We have a motion, and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Moving on to item 9G, please.
Award of city contracts for 38 on-call professional services providers.
Okay. Where this item is the second iteration of our on-call professional service program. The last program, we just finished up our three years with our qualifications-based prequalifications for design professionals. Sorry, I've been talking construction too many projects. And this project really helps us deliver. We're able to get qualified professionals to assist us on a variety of projects, whether it's reviewing some of our in-house designs, creating new designs, getting projects delivered. Over the last three years, we've had over 80 contracts, 82 from what we've counted, that we've expedited delivery. Through this on-call system, we're able to get a professional onboard within a matter of hours to a matter of a week or so instead of months, where we go out for qualifications, review the qualifications, bring a contract to council. Now, again, these contracts will get us started on very small things to getting moving forward. When a contract is large enough, it will come to council for consideration and approval, so it's not a carte blanche to go crazy, but it's a way to expedite delivery of smaller designs to keep things moving. This is a five-year program, and we're asking to have this renew annually for these amounts. If there's a change in the amounts, we will come back for that, but it's a mutual agreement between the consultants and the city based on their performance on projects that we do provide them. The consultants understand that there's no guarantee of any work, that this is just a prequalification, and these contracts are only to be used when we have a project for them to do. So if there's any questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes. So Mark and Steve, there's still the procurement policy that we put into place, this is within that. I mean, there's still those rules in place.
Yes. This type of work has additional state requirements on how it's selected, which is why they do this selection, to have these on-call services.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to award the on-call professional services contracts listed on Attachment One for fiscal year 19 through fiscal year 24.
Second.
Motion, second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Item 9H.
Approval of a three-year contract for off-site fueling service with Bennett Oil Company and SC Fuels.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Micar Fleet Services. This item requests approval to enter into a three-year contract with Bennett Oil Company and SC Fuels for off-site fueling services. The current contract with Bennett Oil and SC Fuels has expired, and a new fuel contract is needed to continue fueling city assets. Gasoline and diesel fuels are required for all city assets and equipment, however, the city does not have its own fueling station. Fleet Services performed an IFB for off-site fueling services and received two bids. Both companies bid markups per gallon based on the industry standard pricing, and this standard, specifically the OPIS price, the Oil Price Information Service, is based on a five-day average of fuel costs in the Phoenix area. Under the proposed contract, refueling stations will be available to the city seven days a week, 24 hours a day. We'll continue using our fuel cards, which are issued to the city employees, which tracks the usage by employee, the department number, and odometer reading. The initial term will be for a three-year period, and the contract may be extended for additional two-year periods for a total of five years with mutual consent of the city and the contractor. Fleet Services recommending award of the contract to both Bennett Oil and SC Fuels since the pricing was so close and gives us more options for fueling locations. And with that, the fueling is available in each department that utilizes the fueling. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the council? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
May I move to approve city contract number 2018-225 and 2018-237.
Second.
Motion, second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Item 9I.
Adopt Resolution number 2018-1642 approving the transfer of encumbered appropriations between various departments and funds in the fiscal year 2018 budget.
Thank you, Maureen. Mayor Mark Woodfill, Budget and Finance Department. This is the item we do basically every year in June. We take a look at the year, all throughout the year, we've talked about these things as they've come to council, and this is just kind of a recap of these things to make the official action to move the budget appropriation. I'd like to, though, step through all five of these just to go through them real quick. The first one is some reorganizations that we talked about during the budget process. We're moving water resources into Public Works. That was in the city manager's office, that's 3.9 million. It's a big number. It's related to the Big Chino Water Ranch, including the debt service, as well as a comprehensive agreement, number one, spending for the monitoring and modeling project, so that's why it's such a large number. Also, during the year and in the new year, we moved code enforcement from community development to the city manager's office, that's 144. We also moved centralized inspection services, like the fire inspection from the fire department into community development. That was done at the beginning of this year. And then in bed tax, we had $30,000 that was appropriated for tournament advertisement for ball tournaments, and that was budgeted during the process in Parks and Rec, but tourism actually takes care of that advertising for them, so moving that $30,000 to the tourism division in the city manager's office. So those were the reorganizations that we have included in this. The next item is the movement of the PSPRS annual required contribution for the unfunded liability, and we talked about this at the May 22 budget workshop. We've pulled the unfunded liability payment of the ARC out of the departments to allow comparability of the departments. These relatively These relatively large components, or debt service, if you will, of those departments was basically hiding any other activity in the departments. By pulling it out, we were able to draw attention to it, to the ARC payment showed it significantly in the budget workshop, but we're also able to show what's actually happening in the Police and Fire Department. Otherwise, you have $3 million in the Police Department that'll fluctuate up and down depending on actuarial report, hiding or taking the focus off of other changes that are happening in Police and Fire. So those are the first two, Police at 3 million, Fire at 2.8. And then also this year, we, remember, we sold Fire Station Number Seven as well as a few other items that we were sending the money to PSPRS. Well, we hadn't appropriated enough to cover that, so this 200,000, just to give the appropriation for the monies that council directed us to spend. And again, all of these items are not movement of money, these are movement of budget appropriation. It's not spending anything else that hasn't already been discussed. The next item has to do with some impact fee funds. We were able this year to really improve our lobby and our customer service counters to increase our capacity for the public, as well as help people out quicker and more efficiently at both community development and in utility billing. We were able to use the Public Building Impact Fee Fund. It was a good project. We've had a lot of positive comments on it. However, it wasn't appropriated. We just need to move appropriation from our contingencies for that. We also had a project we've been doing the last two years, which was moving the community resource people out to the Fire Training Center into an old building that had a lot of challenges to it. That project went over a little bit in relation to the age of the building, so we need to put another $12 million of appropriation out there. Again, these are all coming from impact fees because they increased our capacity to serve the public. Feel free to interrupt me if I go through these if I'm going too quick. 12,000, sorry. Did I say 12 million? Million, thousand, what's the difference? It was 12,000, sorry. We have two areas, kind of like the item we talked about earlier at the transfer station, the hauling contract. In Fleet Services, they have, they're going to be over budget, partially related to the fact that business is too good, like at our transfer station. This has to do with their parts inventory, they're having to buy more parts to do more repairs, which they, of course, receive revenue from the various departments and other entities they do that for. And also, we had a couple vehicles that were supposed to be received in fiscal year 2017. They didn't make it by the June 30 cutoff last year. They were received in July and August, so they were charged to this budget year. That makes up 155,000 that is needed to move from the contingency to there. And then in the tourism, I'm sorry, in the economic development area of the city manager department, we had a lot of activity this year. We had a contract with, we had contracts with Jim Robb and various conferences and things like that that went on. It exceeded what was appropriated. The contracts, of course, did go to council, were approved by council. We just need to move the appropriation there, and that's 25,000. The last of our items is just our standard movement to grants, and we did this a few years ago, again, kind of like the PSPRS movement that we talked about. We did this to better present to the public and to the council how our departments are doing. We had a lot of contingencies in each department for grants that they may not get, but it made that budget number really kind of a useless number when you're comparing because, yeah, we need 500,000 in case we get something. So we pulled all those very contingent grants out and put them in one grant contingency and non-departmental grant contingency so that when you look at Parks and Rec and you look at Police or Fire, you actually see what they need to do the job for the citizens. But as they get grants that they didn't budget for, we need to move appropriation to cover those. And that's what this last entry is. We had, needed to move these three appropriations. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, this will be reflected in the tentative budget if council approves it today.
Thanks, Mark. Councilman Good.
Yeah, Mark, I certainly understand the necessity for moving budgetary items into the departmental responsibilities so that their management is handling the appropriate budgetary amounts and the other streamlining you're doing. My question primarily is the PSPRS movement from department into non-departmental. Now, I understand that it kind of commingles their unfunded liability with their actual operational costs, and that kind of hides or blends the management of their operational expenses with their funding liability under PSPRS. So if we move that into non-departmental, will that still be clearly defined? Because I know PSPRS reports both Fire and Police liability separately, and we want to closely monitor our payments and our improvements in those areas. So will we still see those separate categories? Yes, definitely. Again, we just pulled it out, basically, out of Police and Fire operating budgets, and it's in what we call non-departmental because it's a variety of things, but we still maintain that separation between Police and Fire on that. And again, we make it a very focal part of our whole budget process because it's a significant financial issue that the city is dealing with. Yeah, I just want to make sure it isn't commingled or blended somehow, and then we lose our clear understanding of what those amounts are and how we're paying down that liability. No, it's definitely separated. It's also separated in our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is audited each year. So it is very separated.
Great, thanks. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, Mayor, this sounds like a good time to recognize the ambassador program that we've implemented in combination with what we've done with the redesigning of the City Hall here. Much more welcome. We've had lots of positive comments, as Mark said, from citizens when they come and someone meets them and they say, how can I help you? And just nice to have that friendly face. And I think it's really important that we recognize staff, because we had lots of staff. People do this over the past month, and now we're turning it to ambassador volunteers that are showing up, and it's just, it's been a really nice addition to City Hall. It makes us a little more customer-friendly, which is part of our strategic plan. So thank you, Mark, for your part in that.
Thank you, Council.
Good comments. Anything else from the council? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2018-1642.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
I have a quote from Coach Vince Lombardi today. "The price of success is hard work, dedication to the job at hand, and the determination that whether we win or lose, we have applied the best of ourselves to the task at hand." This meeting is adjourned.